Suburban Athletic Development Corporation because that's the one that is only the recommendation. So that is a rezoning petition plus a conditional use petition with numbers, requests on the conditional use A through K. And I'll ask for a motion on that case.
Have to sit in, John?
No, do you want?
Yeah, just me.
Bob, that's John's case.
Excuse me, I couldn't hear very well, Bob.
Oh, I'm sorry, John.
That's all right. No, that's not your fault. It's just the way these things go sometimes. Not at all your fault. I didn't mean to say that. I'm just trying to be sure I don't button in the wrong place. Is this the Washington Street case or that you want a motion on or is it the sportsplex at Sawmill Creek?
West Suburban Athletic Development Corporation, which is up for recommendation only, so I need a motion on that case.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I will make the motion. I will make a motion to deny the petitioner's request. I have struggled with this case greatly. Initially, I was quite enamored with the concept of a sports complex. However, gradually, the size and magnitude of the operation began to, as it were, dawn on me and I realized that this is too large of an operation and a unwarranted intrusion, as it were, in the quiet family neighborhood. And sort of like putting a square peg in a round hole. Additionally, I am concerned about some other things. Now, I don't know if you want me to continue or leave that for the discussion.
Why don't you, why don't we wait for a second?
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to make a secondary motion, please.
Wait until this one is resolved. Motion has been made by Mr. Akeem and seconded by Mr. Ketter. And Ms. Anderson has an amendment to the motion that's proposed.
Yes. That amendment would be I vote to, I want the vote for the West Suburban facility to, I'd like to make a motion in favor, that the vote, that be set in favor of it, that we approve it. And then you can vote the way you want.
That would be done if the first motion fails.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay, so let's have discussion on the motion to deny.
Are you finished, John?
Mr. Akeem, do you want?
Well, I had, I had a few additional points and concerns. I say that I'm very concerned about the fact that an operation this size is going to be functioning on our septic system. And that septic system is going to be fairly close to the creek. And these things are, want to fail. So I, something like this should have been on sewer and water. Add to this the fact that the late hours of the operation, the operation will continue till, the games will continue till maybe 11 o'clock at night. 10:30 is the earliest that counsel for the petitioner had said the games could be completed by. And that's, again, an intrusion into the life of the neighborhood. Add to this the fact that there's a bar on premises that will serve people other than those participating at the sportsplex, if I may loosely refer to it as the sportsplex. And you will have, the concern is that you will have people who one doesn't know well, who are not part of the operation there, who will be driving in and through the neighborhood, maybe in an inebriated state. So I, I just think it's, it's just not the right thing to go in over there. That's why I'm concerned. Go ahead, Barry, I've, I'm finished.
Okay, I, in addition to what Mr. Akeem has said, I have a couple of concerns. First of all, I take this that there are two actual issues in front of us. A motion for a variance to change the zoning and a conditional use. Speaking to the zoning request of the change, I have a problem with that. This proposed area is a non-developed parcel within a residential area. It's what we refer to, and I think the industry does, as somewhat of a green space. And my denial of that request is based on my opinion that the rezoning of a green space, since there's nothing there, should fit the property as it stands. Or if they can't do that, a case should be made to show the standards for a change from the present zoning to the new classification. And, and some of those are, they're pretty well made out, the seven factors and that. They've showed no hardship. There was no attempt to even try to sell this as residential. So when you combine all the other elements, they didn't match. I find that's the basis not to grant it. Then with the conditional use, my, my concerns are, I guess I'll start with the easiest one. The proposal by the petitioner was very vague. There was a lot of times it would said, well, look into that. There's a possibility of that. There's different things of that nature. And the chairman was very good about saying to him, do you need a continuance? Do you want to supplement the record? Do you want to add more information or anything else? And to all this, he chose not to expand his presentation. And the real problem with that is that limits, not only should we grant the conditional use, but if you do a conditional use, you want to put conditions on it in some instances. And we're, we wouldn't know how to validly put them on. I think the overall proposal here impacts the surrounding residences and the owners and residents of that area. It affects their enjoyment and the use of their property to, to high a degree. And I don't care what the one expert said, there is no way around it. It's going to impact, in my opinion, their property values. Then Mr. Akeem mentioned the bar and the restaurant. There's a vagueness as to that, too. And the vehicles that are coming in, the ages of these people, there's too many vague issues to put conditions on it. But I agree with Mr. Akeem. You, you bring in this facility and you have a bar and restaurant, that's open to the public. And there's been no type of qualification, what type of impact that'll have in traffic and people coming in, regardless of any other problems. Another instance is this particular piece of property backs up to the forest preserve. An open area with wildlife that not only gives enjoyment use to the residents in that area, it is a general public benefit to the overall community, or two page or beyond. And that would be affected. The next thing is, I agree with Mr. Akeem. This, this is a undeveloped piece of property and there is no reason that there wasn't a presentation to put septic, do away with the septic and put sewer on the entire project. And I, I've brought this up on prior cases. The local, the county, the state, and even the federal government put dollars into infrastructure to build up these sewage treatment plants. And this is a way to circumvent it. And if they were granted this down the road, to opt out of it. And then you become, we're trying almost a spot, septic, spot septic as opposed to a complete sewer system. My next point is, and it's, it might be a small one, but it was, the comments of the applicant all along was this is a public value. It's, it's not. It is a personal movement for value. He made a comment that the noise issue by the members of the community is, was kind of downplayed because I-55 is right there and there's a lot of noise from that. And what I thought about that, I-55 is an interstate highway which is a, provides a public benefit and there's times when a public benefit can override personal rights. So I think that was a poor example and I don't think it has a basis. And I, I really view this overall, regardless of what he said, as a private profit endeavor. It's not even a non-for-profit. So any type of argument, this is really for the nearby residents, their value and other public benefit. It, it's not, they may use it. We don't even really know the overall ages or anything else. It's just too vague. And it's, when you look at the height of the dome and then you take in the consideration also, the surrounding elevations throughout there, it, it is going to be too well viewed by a number of people. The lighting of the ballparks with some of the elevations will be up too high. The overall thing is, it's just too intense and it does not, it, when you weigh the rights of the residents against it, I believe it gives the basis for a denial. Thank you.
Well, I'll weigh in at this point because I don't hear anything else. Ms. Anderson, when I'm finished, I'll give you an opportunity to.
I didn't speak either, Bob.
I'll weigh in at this point. And Ms. Anderson, when I, when I finish, I'll give you an opportunity to make the other side of the argument because I know if this fails, you have an alternative motion. First of all, I think taking the request for rezoning, generally, I don't think the standards for rezoning were met. One of those standards, according to the LaSalle scheme, is the suitability of use of the property under the current zoning. And one of the things that the petitioner said is that probably we didn't need to rezone, but in abundance of caution, they elected to pursue rezoning of this site in order to make sure that the height issue would be resolved. I think that's fatal to the suitability of the site for use under the current zoning category of residential. In other words, it's a little circular. Next, with respect to the conditional use, here we have not only the standard set on the ordinance, but the guidance from the Supreme Court on conditional uses, which means generally we have to find something unique about this site within the district which overcomes the presumption of granting a conditional use. I'm not sure there's quite a presumption, but that's my sort of shorthand way of saying it. Here, and before I go farther, I don't think that that favorable presumption relates to anything more than the base conditional use. It does not relate, that favorable interpretation does not relate to all of the exceptions. Go back to the basic question of conditional use. I do think we have unique circumstances with respect to this site. And those are that we have the septic sewer issue, significant issue. There's lots of talk about restricting the bar to people that are using the athletic facility. I don't know how that could be accomplished, but in any case, a significant use of the athletic facility complicates the septic. Then there's the question of the proximity to the forest preserve. And I think the whole question of the height difference is, once again, a circular argument. I asked at the hearing, why does it have to be this tall? And basically, the answer is because the footprint, the physics for the construction of a dome requires a certain footprint to have a certain height. Well, again, that's a circular argument. I, I just don't think you need that big of a facility. Generally speaking, this site is not suitable for this use, especially given all of the exceptions, setbacks and otherwise that are being requested. And just the number of exceptions that are being required is suggestive of the fact that this site doesn't work for this particular use as it's planned. I want to caution, as we go through this discussion, hardship, unique circumstance, and practical difficulty are not to be considered in the same way as, as a variation request because exceptions under conditional use are distinct from hardship. So let's be careful not to indicate that the rationale of any of our votes relies on hardship, the absence of hardship, unique circumstance, or practical difficulty. So now, if no one else wants to speak in favor of the motion, I think we should, if Ms. Anderson wants to.
I would.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. One second. Oh, you need the mic.
Sorry. I looked at the site twice. The site is way down like in a hole down there. So it actually, it will be sunk, the dome will be sunk down in there. As far as the septic system is concerned, the site is divided up with a creek and the septic system is only going to be on a small part of it. The rest is going to be served by regular sewer and water. The Farady Department says there's no hydrants in that area. My girl out there, there's hydrants there. And as far as lighting, right near my house, they have football, baseball fields that are all lit up right next to where the people live. The people voted it in. I got a vote for this. Thank you.
Okay. Then, does anyone else on the board want to speak in favor of the motion to oppose?
Yeah, I would like to, Bob.
All right, Mr. Moran?
Besides what Mr. Ketter said and Mr. Akeem said, I just want to add that it was pretty vague on the operation of the restaurant slash bar. But they did mention that it would be operating on off-hours of any of the sports. So for that matter, and everything else that was already brought up, I will be voting against it.
Okay. Then, Ms. Anderson, do you want to make a contrary? Let me clarify something. There's a lot of talk about I'm voting for it, I'm voting against it. The motion is a motion to deny. So let's just remember that. Now, Ms. Anderson?
Mr. Chairman, I just feel that I, that motion should be made to support something and then we, then we vote no to deny it. I think it gets very tricky when people are on Zoom and other reasons. You know, it's, it's like, let's give it the button for the doubt. I will not be supporting this, so I'm not in favor of it. The point is, let's just do it in the, you know, I think a better way to make the motion to approve it and we all, and if so, choose to vote it down. I will be voting no on the approval of this topic. That's all I'm asking for. So maybe, maybe Mr. Akeem would like to redo his motion. Because we're all in agreement, it seems, at least few of us that spoke.
Our custom is to have a member from the township offer a motion either in support or in opposition to the proposed petition. So for, for those of us who do not support the petition, to make a motion to approve so we could vote that down is, is a little cumbersome. I understand, I understand the double negative confusion that you're raising. And that's why I, that's why I offered just before you spoke, that we need to remember that what we have here is a motion to deny. But there is a motion on the floor. Unless Mr. Akeem and Mr. Ketter want to amend that motion, then I have to take the motion that's on the floor. So are there any further comments? Then, please call the roll on the motion to deny. A favorable vote on this motion means that you are rejecting the requested petition.
Member Akeem?
Aye.
Member Cutter?
Aye.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Schultz? I believe you're muted, Member Schultz.
Just a reminder that I'm recusing myself from this case.
Member Moran?
Aye.
Member Murphy?
No.
Chairman Carville?
Aye.
The motion to deny passes by a vote of five in favor, one opposed, and one recusal by Mr. Schultz. Thank you. So that takes us to.
Mr. Chairman, Greg, thank you for your time on this and the other members. There's been a lot said tonight I cannot respond to because others are not able to respond. We'll address the things of the Development Committee and County Board, but I appreciate your time on this. We'll have to address corrections later. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Nice of you to be so kind after, I don't think, after a question.
Well, it happens. Some things have been missed, but we'll work on it.
Right. Okay, thank you very much. So now, we have Z20046, the 28W510 Washington Avenue Investments case. This is a Winfield Township case. I'm going to read from my remarks at page 54 of the transcript. I continued this public hearing till this evening. And I said at that time, namely tonight, we'll conduct the continued public hearing exclusively for the purpose of, of the board to ask conditional questions based on the materials that are received prior to that time, the time of the hearing tonight, from the petitioner, mainly that information we asked for. Oh, yeah, okay. I'm going to, I'm going to delay just a moment here because we have some audience members that want to join in. So, welcome aboard. I see we're comfortably under the limits of 10 people, so we're not in violation of anything and that's, right, good. All right, again, as announced at the last hearing, we continue the public hearing exclusively for the board to ask questions. The reason that that occurred is that in order to facilitate the greatest public comment at the original public hearing, we took comments from members of the public and deferred comments and questions from members of the board. So in order to facilitate questions from the board, we have to technically reopen the public hearing. After we resolve those questions, then we will go immediately to our recommendation meeting and have our vote on this case. I want to indicate to members of the public that we, we have a provision for public comment generally, which occurs after our vote, after old business, new business, and then the last item on the agenda for every recommendation meeting is public comment. So for those of you that came in, if you want to make comments about any case or anything, you may do so at the end of the hearing. With that, let's reopen the public hearing on the case that I announced and ask, let's see, this is a Winfield Township petition, so I'll go to the Winfield, well, I'll open for questions. I don't think we have a Winfield representative, but does any member of the board have any questions?
I have a point of order, or a quest, point of order question. This is actually two issues being voted on, correct?
This is a variation to allow existing concrete parking to remain within the 20-foot setback required under group quarters. And then, secondly, a conditional use to allow change of use from group home to group quarters to increase occupancy from eight to 12.
And the basis of my question is, or maybe, maybe it should be in the form of request, that maybe we should divide this into two separate votes?
That's fine. I want to make a preliminary point. There was a significant amount of discussion and some questions from me at the public hearing about the basic operation of this, of this group home, proposed group quarters. I said at the time that I wanted to know what the client agreement had to say because I recall that the petitioner indicated, well, that, and this would occur and that would occur and this operating restriction exists. And I said, is that all set out in your client agreement? Yes, it is. Do we have a copy of your client agreement? I offered the opportunity to redact as I remember any financial information because that shouldn't take our decision. And we don't have that client agreement, so I'm not prepared to vote on this because that was an important thing, which is why I asked for it. I don't know if any others feel the same. But, Mr. Ketter, your distinction, a motion could be made to grant one and deny the other or grant both or deny both. But if you prefer, if someone prefers to offer a motion on one of these items rather than the other, that's fine, too.
In the interim, I think the attorney for the applicant was trying to speak.
If permitted, Mr. Chair, on your question, we did provide to you the information you had asked us for, we believe, related to the eligibility requirements for, for the individuals. Because the contract itself is a confidential document and what we do with the individual patients, we provided what we thought you were looking for was who's allowed to be in this facility. So to make it clear the type of people who are there, et cetera. The, the other items in terms of what the procedures are, we've stated on the record so we can be held to those as to what those requirements are. And that was our.
Oh, then I am prepared to vote because what you said is you're not going to give us that record. So that's fine.
Yeah, my hope is that Exhibit 6 is the information you're looking for and I'm happy to state on the record anything else you'd like us to, to know from that agreement. I would say Jennifer Gallagher is here with me, with Montanito, and could do that. We want to answer your questions. We don't, however, want to provide a, that, that private agreement with the individuals. But I think the admissions issues you were talking about are all in Exhibit 6 to our supplemental materials submitted.
Okay, well, those are assertions. Those assertions are not validated or verified by your client agreement, which was a concern to me. In any case, let's go to questions from the board at the, in this portion, which is our public hearing portion. Does anyone have any questions? Are there no questions from any member of the board? Well, then, you know what, I don't usually do this, but let's take a motion to close the public hearing and adjourn to recommendation.
The move.
Who is that, Ms. Anderson?
Second.
A motion to close public hearing and adjourn to recommendations made by Ms. Anderson and seconded by Mr. Ketter. Is there any discussion on that motion? All in favor of the motion? You know what, we should call the roll because we have this Zoom thing going. So could you call the roll on that motion, please?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Cutter?
Aye.
Member Akeem?
Aye.
Member Schultz?
Aye.
Member Moran?
Aye.
Member Murphy?
Aye.
Chairman Carville?
Aye. Seven to nothing. We are adjourned at public hearing and let's open our recommendation session. May I take a motion on the variation request and conditional, and conditional use? And.
And I'll take that motion in any form that is the preference of the Board. If you want to bifurcate that and take it in two pieces, then please do so.
Whose area is that?
Well, it's Winfield, so.
Murphy.
Is that yours? Okay, you're Winfield, go ahead.
A chap.
Go, Mr. Murphy's going to make a motion.
I move that we approve the variation to allow for the concrete parking within 20 feet setback for group quarters. The second to allow the change from group quarters, group home to group quarters, increase from eight to 12 people.
I don't know if I was the only one. I couldn't hear.
No, I couldn't hear either.
I will repeat. I couldn't hear.
I will repeat it. Mr. Murphy offered a motion to approve both the variation and the conditional use. Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to the motion to approve variation and conditional use?
I'll second that to get it on the table.
Okay, motion by Mr. Murphy and seconded by Ms. Anderson. Discussion on the motion? Mr. Murphy, do you want to make any remarks about your motion? Are you satisfied? Mr. Murphy has no additional remarks. Is anyone else?
I have a problem with the parking cement slab that they've not met the standards to qualify for a variance and a variance will run with the land no matter what happens with the underlying conditional use. So I, I, I am opposed to that variance being granted.
I concur, Mr. Cutter. So I would, I would not support the variation. Anyone else want to weigh in on that?
Variation, the parking, but I could see, but I, but I could see just looking at it, didn't seem to, it seemed to be screened off when I was there. It seemed to be screened off.
Okay, I'll repeat. Mr. Murphy indicates that he observed the site and that the parking area seemed to be screened off. My own view is that whether or not it's screened off, it didn't meet the, it don't satisfy the, the standards for a variation at all.
Can I ask a question? I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Carthel.
Hakim, ask away.
My, my question is very simple. Is it not true that the parking lot is the same one that exists today before this case was even being considered? And nothing is being changed?
As I remember, and I'll ask for clarification from the staff, the parking lot has been allowed as a, as a pre-existing non-conforming use. Is that right?
My understanding was.
The, what there, what the petitioner is referring to as the parking lot is actually the driveway. Driveways are allowed to be one foot from the property line. They would like to convert this driveway into a parking lot. So it was approved as a driveway as part of their group home, but when, when they convert it in the same space into a parking lot, then they technically are required to have the 20-foot setback. And once again, the driveway is only to attenuate cars going from the, from off-site on the private road to legal parking spaces.
Oh, okay. I understand that a little better. Do you understand the answer to your question, Mr. Hakim?
Yes, I do. Now, now the issue is, do you think we need to amend the, well, we can't amend the petitioner's request because the petitioner has asked for a variation. But as Mr. Hoss explained, it's a driveway which is being used as part of the parking lot and is being referred to as such.
Right, and Mr. Cutter's point is, however, whether it was, well, it's as Mr. Hoss indicated with respect to the authority to make the use of that driveway in the past. Things are different now and as Mr. Cutter indicated, we would be approving a variation which runs with the land.
Right, and we cannot do anything to alter anything, so then we would have to not approve that.
If that's the preference, my, my view is, with respect to the motion to grant both requests, variation and conditional use, as I said earlier, I find nothing unique or distinct about this particular site within the district which would allow me to deny the conditional use. So my sense is, conditional use should be granted, but not the variation because the standards have not been satisfied or met.
Correct.
To minimize this on a forever basis. So the way I get to where I think we should be is to deny this motion, offer a substitute motion, I can't do it, but an alternative is substitute motion to grant conditional use and deny variation. But that's only one opinion.
Well, that makes sense to me.
That's why I asked the question when we began, if we could break this into two votes, so we didn't spend this much time debating it. I, I saw it as two separate things with the possibility of one passing, so that's why I did it.
Okay, well, the way we usually do that is to have one combined motion because as this proceeds further, it's kind of neater package to have one motion, you know, and sometimes we say grant part 12 and deny all other relief or whatever. That's the customary way we've done it. Mr. Murphy has indicated that he wishes to withdraw the motion to approve. I need a concurrence from Ms. Anderson on that. Do you concur to, would you permit the motion to be withdrawn, Janice?
I do, yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm looking at the wrong person there. Then I need a substitute motion.
I move that we change the group home to group quarters and increase the occupancy from eight to 12.
And then we need to finish it with.
The variation never runs separate.
Okay. I don't know how we can check. All right, Mr. Murphy has opted for the structure where we take these, as Mr. Cutter indicated, a piece at a time. He now offers a motion solely on the conditional use and his motion is to grant the conditional use.
I'll second that and I think the chairman pretty much in his comments laid out the rationale for voting in favor of it.
Motion by Mr. Murphy, seconded by Mr. Cutter to grant part two, the request for conditional use. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Would you call, call the roll on the motion to approve the conditional use?
Member Murphy.
Aye.
Member Cutter.
Aye.
Member Hakim.
Aye.
Member Schultz.
Aye.
Member Moran.
Aye.
Member Anderson.
Aye.
Chairman Carthel.
Aye. That, a part of this case and that motion is granted by a vote of seven in favor and none opposed. That leaves the hanging chat of the request number one, the variation request. Is there a motion on the variation?
I also move that we continue the variation for, for the 20-foot setback required under group home. I move that we approve the within 20-foot setback required under group homes.
What was the motion?
Mr. Murphy has offered a motion to approve the variation with respect to the 20-foot setback. Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to the motion for approving the variation? The motion fails for the lack of a second. Is there an alternative motion with respect to the variation?
I'd make a motion to deny the variance based on the fact that they have not proved up the elements necessary to grant a variance that runs with the land.
I'll second that motion. A member Cutter.
Motion to deny the variation request concerning the parking area offered by Mr. Cutter, seconded by Mr. Anderson. Is there discussion on that motion? I think we've sort of had our discussion in various bits and pieces as we've discussed the rest of it, but I concur with Mr. Cutter that the standards have not been made to support a variation. Anyone else want to offer a comment? All right, please call the roll on the motion to deny the variation.
Member Cutter.
Aye.
Member Anderson.
Aye.
Member Murphy.
No.
Member Hakim.
Aye.
Member Schultz.
Aye.
Member Moran.
Aye.
Chairman Carthel.
Aye. The motion to deny is carried by a vote of six in favor and one opposed and that concludes the recommendation session on, on this case. We now have, I'll indicate there is no old business, there is no new business. We're open for public comment. Public comment can be offered now if anyone wishes to make public comment. Is there anyone, first of all, I'll pick the people in the audience. Does anybody have any comment that you want to make?
Can we ask questions?
Sure, you can do whatever you want during public comment because it's limited in time to about three minutes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Charles DeBrees. I am the owner of 28W 570 Washington, so next door to the subject house. I have a question about the use of driveway versus parking lot discussion. The driveway goes to nowhere and if there's a limit on cars required or maximum allowed cars to sit cars and the parking lot can hold 15, I don't understand how those two, whether it is, should this technically be called a parking lot or a driveway? This, it's, it's, it's really foreign concept to me how the driveway goes nowhere, but has 15 slots for parking.
Okay, as a representative here of the zoning board, I'm not going to respond to public comment, but we can have staff, I don't want to go outside the record on our recommendation or public hearing of this case, but we can refer that to Mr. Hoss. You can deal with it after the hearing. You don't want to make any statement there. Why don't you make a brief explanation of how you intend to proceed?
Sure, so any questions that you have, you can talk with me after the meeting closes tonight or you can email me. My email address is paul.hoss, H-O-S-S as in Sam, at duPageCO.org or you can call me at 630-514-0628. And I will have to address those questions apart from the zoning board appeals meeting tonight.
Technically, we're outside the record of the case and members of the Board can't talk outside the record of the case. Sorry. Anybody else? Is there anybody on Zoom that wants to make a public comment?
The attorney, can you see him?
No, the, the case is closed, sir, so I can't take your comments now.
No comments. We simply wanted to say thank you for your time and consideration and have a good evening.
Very much appreciated. Thank you. No one else, so we'll adjourn the recommendation meeting for this evening. Thank you all. I know this is very awkward and it's cumbersome for all of us, so I appreciate everybody pushing the buttons properly and Mr. Hakim resolving the mute issue and all the rest of it. So thanks, we're adjourned. To the members of the Board, you have the schedules, I presume.